Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County Legislative Meeting dated Thursday, June 2nd. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you all to please silence your cellphones and any electronic devices you may be. I would ask that you also stand for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag and remain standing for the National Anthem this evening to be sung by Catherine Sassy.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight were the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Yes, she gets that from her mother, not from me.[160.12][160.12](laughter)
Sorry, I have allergies. I'm sorry that the high notes were a little rough.
Okay, very proud of my daughter Catherine, a graduating senior from Pine Bush High School, off to Monmouth University to study nursing. So, we would like to present this to you this evening, Catherine, on behalf of the Orange County Legislature. Thank you for doing a wonderful job. I did ask my family, they're all here tonight, if they wanted to stay through the session, but my wife's already out the door. So, thanks again. Thanks, Kate. Love you.
Thank you very much, Katie.[191.26][191.26](applause) And we congratulate you on your next adventure.
Thank you.
And it's great to see the entire Sassy family here. You're welcome to join us, but I understand you would like to go.
(inaudible).
Have a lovely evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some recognition. Oh, we have to do roll call before I do that. So, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk.
Fagion.
Here.
Paduk. Amo. Anagnostakis. Benton.
Here.
Resha.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Present.
Ruskovich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra. Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland. Tortell.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Benelli. Six, five, fifteen present, six absent.
And we do have two recognition proclamations this evening. The first one, I would ask Anne Marie Maglion, our Director of Office for the Aging, to step forward. Welcome. We get to see you a few times a year, but this is a very special time because we're celebrating Older Americans Month, which was actually in May. However, we got a little...
(inaudible).
We always do it at the beginning of June, so we make it special. We extend it, let's put it that way. Unfortunately, the county executive and the deputy county executive couldn't join us here tonight, but it's a pleasure to join with him in presenting this proclamation to Anne Marie on behalf of both of us in regard to Older Americans Month. I don't have to tell you the value that the older Americans in Orange County contribute to our community. They have the wisdom and the knowledge and the experience to lead us all, and we can learn from them. However, this evening, I'd also like to congratulate Anne Marie, because without her and her staff, we would not be able to provide the much-needed programs for our senior citizens that give them, that keep them vibrant, healthy, and a valuable part of our community. And for you and your staff, thank you so much. You do so much. And this is, I want to make sure I give you the right proclamation, and I was going to give you the wrong one.[354.56][354.56](laughter) So, Anne Marie, thank you so much on behalf of all of us. Thank you so much.[362.12][362.12](applause)
Thank you so much. I am so proud to my team and I, pardon, my team is here, to represent and really care for the older adults that live in this county. By 2040, the number of older adults living in the United States will double, and that's going to be 80.8 million people. So, we are the fastest-growing population, and I'm including myself, and it continues, specifically, the 85 and older population. So, right now, in 2020, there were 7 million; by 2040, there would be 15 million. So, our services are desperately needed, and it keeps people living with the best quality of life. So, I want to thank you, because you pass everything I ask you for, so thank you very much. And it really does help you, because we all know that having older adults living in the community, being active members in the community, is really what everything is all about. They're the foundation of our society. So, thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you. We are very blessed. Thank you so much. Congratulations.[433.12][433.12](applause) And June is also Dairy Month, so I would actually ask legislator Paul Ruskovich to join me up here. Paul is a farmer himself, not necessarily involved in dairy, but he is a farmer who works with the agricultural community. And I see that we have Lucy Joyce from Cornell, if you'd like to join us as well. And maybe you can introduce some of the people from the court that is here this evening. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, my dear. Thank you so much. So, I'm going to ask Mary Ulrich first to come in and actually do the formal introductions with our dairy court, and we have a new dairy educator as well. I'd like to introduce Grace Ott. Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, so Grace, if you want to come up. And so, from the Dairy Promotion Committee, we have Hannah Weebolt, Silas Weebolt, Anoria Demarest, and Lexi, I should draw your last name?
DeBlak.
DeBlak. So, come on up, kids. Do you want to read that first, or do you want Hannah to talk first?
(inaudible).
Okay. Well, you read first.
All right. Yeah, it's great to be here. Every June is Dairy Month. I know in years past, we've had milk and ice cream and stuff, but maybe we'll get back to that next year.
Yes, I was asked if we were going to have ice cream.[517.12][517.12](laughter) I was asked by the kids two or three times.
Okay. No, we do, you know, every June, we recognize June is Dairy Month. You know, it's an important industry here in Orange County, and I know the 4-H program, Dairy Ambassadors Program, does a great job in promoting the dairy industry. So, we have here a proclamation recognizing June 2022 as Dairy Month and honoring the Orange County Dairy Promotional Court members for the year 2021, 2022. Whereas milk is New York's leading agricultural product and is produced all across the state, milk sales account for one-half of total agricultural receipts. Production in 2021 was more than 15 billion pounds with a preliminary value of over 2.9 billion. New York is the nation's fifth-leading milk producer, and whereas in 2022, so far, Orange County dairy farms produced around 32 million pounds of milk with sales value of 7.9 million, which are brought into the local economy. Currently, there are 32 active dairy farms in Orange County with over 3,000 milking cows and almost the same number of heifers, animals less than two years of age not producing milk. And whereas each year, members of our youth are called upon to be representatives of the Orange County dairy industry through educational and outreach programs funded by the American Dairy Association and Dairy Council. In support of Cornell Cooperative Extension, the Dairy Promotion Court informs the public about dairy families, farms, the wholesome products that are produced using milk, and their nutritional value. Now, be it hereby proclaimed that we, the legislature of the County of Orange, on behalf of the citizens of Orange County, do hereby designate the month of June 2022 as Dairy Month and as a day of recognition of the 2021-2022 Dairy Promotion Court, given the second day of June 2022. So, I will present that to whoever wants to take it. You're welcome to speak.
Congratulations, Hannah. Thank you.
Congratulations. (inaudible). June is National Dairy Month. Dairy farmers across New York and here in Orange County work hard each and every day to bring dairy foods to your table. They care for their cows, are stewards of the land and natural resources, and take great pride in bringing milk, cheese, and other dairy products to supermarket shelves. Hello, my name is Hannah Weebolt. I'm a dairy ambassador with the Orange County Dairy Court. Along with me here this evening are the other dairy ambassadors, Lexi, Anoria, and Silas. If you like the open spaces here in Orange County, then thank a farmer. 16% of the land in Orange County is used in active farming, and half of that is devoted to dairies and their support ground. Our 32 active dairy farms play a critical role in providing nature's most perfect food and keeping Orange County beautiful. Remember to buy local and support our farmers. Thank you.[706.57][706.57](applause)
Hannah, thank you very, very much. Lucy, did you want to say a few words?
I want to thank the legislature for all your support of Cornell Cooperative Extension, of agricultural districts, and really everything agriculture in Orange County. I gave a little booklet that you'll get in your mailboxes tomorrow that talks about how Cornell Cooperative Extension works throughout the state, of which, of course, we're a big part of. But I'd also like Grace Ott, our new dairy educator for commercial and youth, she has a little commercial for you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Ott. I'm the livestock, 4-H livestock dairy and equine educator with Orange County CCE. And though I haven't been in Orange County for very long, just since January, I've really seen how important the dairy industry is to this county. And so, as part of my job also, we're trying to increase participation in our 4-H dairy programs. So, I have a Dairy Explorers program starting in a couple weeks for youth. Typically, the age range is age to 12, but any youth above age eight are welcome to just be on farms in Orange County and learn more about the dairy industry and how farmers work. So, if you know of anyone that might be interested, we have registration information on our website, so just direct them there.
Thanks, Grace.[787.88][787.88](applause) Thank you so much, and best of luck to you. And thank you all very, very much, and we're going to get back to work. Thanks. Thank you. It was great to see you. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. That's what happens when you become an older American citizen.[810.13][810.13](laughter) Okay, we also have been practicing just having a monthly recognition. So, for our schedule for June, June 14th is Flag Day. So, just as a reminder, make sure you all wear your little flag with lapels on Flag Day. And for all of the dads and granddads out there, June 19th is Father's Day, so happy Father's Day to all of you. And then, Juneteenth is also on the 19th, however, as of a federal holiday, it's being celebrated on June 20th. And this holiday commemorates the end of slavery by marking the day enslaved people in Texas learned that they were free. It's now a national day of celebration as of last year, and it's a day of celebration, education, and reflection, and we just wanted to point that out to everybody with us this evening. And of course, June is Graduation Month, and we extend our congratulations to all the graduating students, whether you're receiving your doctorate or your master's, or you're even graduating from preschool. We wish all of the students well on these momentous milestones in their lives. And at this point, do we have any public participation? Okay, so then we'll move on to Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pardon me, I had the wrong piece of paper in front of me. I move to vote collectively on agenda items number three through five and 12 through 15.
Okay, if there are no objections, these items will be voted on collectively. All right, so, let's get started with number one.
Legislators Amo, Fagion, with legislator Ruskovich as co-sponsor. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature supporting maintaining the 60-hour workweek for farmworkers.
Second.
Okay, at this time, before we do take the roll call on this vote, I would ask legislative Ruskovich to please speak to this resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, basically, this is a, very similar to a resolution. It was passed at NICEAC, the Association of Counties. And basically, a few years ago, with the Farm Labor, Farm Worker Fair Labor Practices Act, one of the provisions, it created an overtime threshold for farmworkers. Historically, farmworkers had been exempt from that. There was a lot of discussion with the ag industry, and they originally wanted to have it at 40, but they put it in at 60, but at the same time, created this wage board to look at the overtime threshold and report back to the governor. They held several public hearings. During those hearings, over 70% of the testimony was in favor of keeping the threshold at 60 hours and not lowering it to 40. And of the, you know, 30%, that spoke in favor of lowering the threshold of it, none of them were farmers or farmworkers. So, the ag industry, of course, has been urging the governor to keep it at 60. NICEAC has passed a resolution asking for the same, and that's why I introduced this resolution, so that we could put our voices there as well. In addition to the ag industry, a lot of the other business groups around the state have also joined in this effort. Last week, I was at a press conference on the, where the New York State Business Council, the National Federation of Independent Businesses for New York, and Upstate United were all there, asking the governor to keep that at 60. So, I would hope that we would all support this. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Ruskovich. Any other comments, questions, and I would please ask for the roll to be called.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number two, please.
Legislators Ruskovich, Hines, and Fagion. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing the inclusion of certain real property in the consolidated Orange County Agricultural District Number One pursuant to New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, Section 303-A and 303-B.
Second.
Comments or questions? Okay, then, please call the roll.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number three through five are going to be voted on collectively, and that is a roll call vote. So, are there any questions or comments on any one of those? Okay, then, please call the roll.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number seven, please.
Legislators Benton and Hines. Resolution approving the release of the county's interest in into a certain deed sale parcel to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law, Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments? And I would ask the roll to be called, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number three through five are going to be voted on collectively, and that is a roll call vote. So, are there any questions or comments on any one of those? Okay, then, please call the roll.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number six, please.
Legislator Benton. Resolution denying application for correction of certain tax rule pursuant to Section 550 at Al of the Real Property Tax Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? I would ask that the roll be called.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number seven, please.
Legislators Benton and Hines. Resolution approving the release of the county's interest in into a certain deed sale parcel to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law, Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments? And I would ask the roll to be called, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number eight, please.
Legislators Benton and Cheney with legislator Tortell as a co-sponsor. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing the retention of a parcel for open space purposes pursuant to Section 5A1 of Local Law, Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments from anyone? Okay, please call the roll.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number nine, and this is a voice vote.
Legislators Benton and Paduk with legislator Tortell as a co-sponsor. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 Orange County budget for various departments pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number 10.
Legislators Resha, Tui, and Benton. Bond Resolution dated June 2nd, 2022. Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of various equipment for use at Orange County Transfer Station Number One, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $475,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $76,250 expected to be received from the state of New York, and authorizing the issuance of $398,750 bonds of the county to finance said balance of said appropriation.
Second.
Questions, comments? Right, then, I would ask that the roll be called.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number 11, and this is a voice vote.
Legislators Fagion and Stiganga. Resolution authorized in the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intermunicipal agreement between the County of Orange and the County of Rockland pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 1190.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 12. Oh, this is the collective, so it's 12 through 15. And this is a roll call vote. Any questions or comments before we take the roll? Okay, then, Jean.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortell. Tui. Benelli. Fifteen eyes.
Number 16.
Legislators Tortell and Sutherland. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature designating June 26, 2022, through July 2, 2022, as Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week.
Second.
At this time, I would like to call on the Chair of the Health and Mental Health Committee, legislator Tui, to read the resolution that is being proposed in front of us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution Number 16 of 2022. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature designating June 26, 2022, through July 2, 2022, as Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week. Whereas Helen Keller was an American lecturer, author, and activist, deaf and blind since early childhood and living in an era where most individuals similarly afflicted with, were confined to an asylum. Helen Keller overcame her disabilities with the aid of mentor Ann Sullivan and rose to international renown. Keller used her fame to educate others about the blind and to raise funds for related charities. And whereas deaf blindness is a very severe disability, and whereas it is the best, is in the best interest of Orange County to encourage the full participation of Americans with multi-sensory disabilities in our economy by fostering the employment of promoting housing and recreational options for people who are deaf-blind, thus maximizing opportunities for productive life in the community of their choice. And whereas today, people with dual sensory loss should have options to choose their preferred lifestyles. And whereas it is highly appropriate and necessary to publicize the abilities and potential of our fellow citizens who are deaf-blind or severely vision and hearing impaired, and to recognize Helen Keller as a guiding example of courage, hope, determination, and achievement for other individuals who are deaf-blind. Therefore, be it resolved that the Orange County Legislature designates June 26, 2022, through July 2, 2022, as Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week for Orange County, and conveys these sentiments to every citizen of Orange County that all might raise awareness of deaf blindness in our community, dated June 2, 2022. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And at this point, I'd ask for the roll to be called.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortel. Tui. Benelli. 15 eyes.
Number 17, please.
Legislators Resha and Benton. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Reclassify One Assistant Assessor Part-Time to Assistant Assessor at the Orange County Department of Finance, Division of Real Property Tax Service Agency pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortel. Tui. Benelli. 15 eyes.
Number 18, please.
Legislators Fagion, Resha, Menuda, Amo, and Stiganga. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Abolish One Planner and Create Fiscal Technician and Principal Planner at the Orange County Department of Planning pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll calls, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortel. Tui. Benelli. 15 eyes.
Number 19, please.
Legislators Benton, Fagion, Sassy, and Stiganga. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Create Probation Assistant at the Orange County Department of Probation pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortel. Tui. Benelli. 15 eyes.
Number 20.
Legislators Resha, Fagion, and Sassy. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Create Associate Account Clerk Two at the Orange County Department of Probation pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskovich. Sassy. Stiganga. Tortel. Tui. Benelli. 15 eyes.
Number 21, please.
Legislators Fagion, Benton, Tortel, and Luhan. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Abolish Two Fee Negotiators Part-Time and Create Fee Negotiator at the Orange County Department of Mental Health pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Benton. Resha. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Menuda. O'Donnell.